Good evening, everyone. I call to order the meeting of the Portsmouth City Council on Tuesday, November 9th. I would ask that all of the council members please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Once again, welcome all citizens of Portsmouth and Madam Clerk, which you call the role, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a called meeting on October 26, 2021, and of a regular meeting on October 26, 2021. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover. Yes. We now have public hearing, item 21-335, item AUP-21-15, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the agenda item and resolution we're considering?
Yes, sir. Mayflower Park Resolution granting the request of Glenn Robinson and Ellen Crane of Calvary Truck Rental and Moving Supplies LLC for a use permit for a vehicle sales use to rent U-Haul vehicles and sell moving supplies with the shopping, within the shopping center on a 5.634 acre parcel at 6229 Portsmouth Boulevard in the neighborhood Mixed Use Zoning District. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as a mixed-use corridor. The property is owned by Manor Village LLC Parcel. The Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions, and the resolution reads, "A resolution granting a use permit UP 2115 to Glenn Robinson and Ellen Crane to conduct a vehicle sales use through the rental of U-Haul trucks from Suite 6229 of the shopping center located at 6229 Portsmouth Boulevard, Tax Parcel 0620-20020."
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
And do we have the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Sir, would you please come forward?
Yes, sir.
You have 10 minutes, sir.
Hello, thank you for letting me come up here and speak. My name is Glenn Robinson. I'm with Calvary Truck Rentals and Moving Supplies. I'm trying to get the use permit to park rental trucks on the parking lot. The parking lot is very large. It's not, the trucks will not be in the way of any other stores or any other places there conducting their business. I only plan on having four trucks there. I'm only going to need spaces for four trucks. There's going to be no maintenance conducted on those trucks at that spot. If any trucks need work on them, then all I got to do is call U-Haul. They'll come down, take them away, do the work. So it's not going to cause any problems there. I've talked to the owner of the facility, and he told me I can use, I can go ahead and park the trucks there. They'll be parked neatly according to size. They're not going to be randomly out in the parking lot, so I'll make sure everything's nice and, nice and neat. Any trucks that are damaged, again, all I got to do is call U-Haul, so there's not going to be any wreck trucks there, any trucks that are inoperative. Every truck parked there is going to be operative, and it's going to be in use.
Does that, does that complete your comments, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You may be seated.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, this is a public hearing, so anyone in the audience, you do not, you are not required to have signed up to speak at a public hearing. If you wish to speak regarding this matter, you have five minutes. So please come forward at this time and state your name and address if you wish to speak on this item. Seeing none, this item is closed. We are in need of a motion and a second on this item.
Move adoption.
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We've now come to item B-Z-21-06, and Madam Clerk, would you please...
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
I'm asking for us to defer this one to the next meeting, BZ-21-06. Actually, we've received some phone calls based on this, and I think we need some more information for this particular project.
Okay, so you're asking for a consensus from council to defer this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. City Attorney, can you address that, please? Parliamentarian?
It's a public hearing, so I don't know if it needs to be deferred. I think the public hearing can be held, and the vote perhaps can be deferred, but it's been advertised and so forth, so I think it's okay to go ahead at the public hearing and then ask for the defer, you know, after the public hearing, before the vote. Tell you what, let me, if we can take about a two-minute break, let me just look up one thing in my office quickly and make sure that's the proper way of doing it. I don't want to take any rest away from a council person.
Thank you, sir. We can, we can wait for that because we want to do it the right way, sir. Okay? No worries.
Could he go on with his presentation?
He could. I mean, I'm doing this, I still have to shift the height, which I could always change good. He could always.
Mayor, while we've got a pause, if, uh, may, I'd like to remind our citizens of Veterans Day coming up on Thursday, and everyone's invited to join Portsmouth, and all of our veterans certainly are invited on Thursday, November 11th at 11:00 a.m. at High Street Landing as we honor our veterans who've protected our freedom through the years. Our guest speaker will be Vice Admiral Stephen D. Polan, Atlantic Area Commander of the U.S. Coast Guard. So we're very honored to have him as our guest speaker, and once again, that date is the 11th month, 11th day at the 11th hour at High Street Landing.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Yes. Also, I'd like to tell the citizens that we had some kids from Dale's Home and Swanson Home go to their first college football game. They had so much fun. The administration received them with open arms, and of course, my 14-year-old named Jadis insisted that I give each of them $10. So, um, two large buses full of kids and Jadis one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Well, I just want to say congratulations to our newly-elected council member, Christopher Woodard. He was elected on last Tuesday, so just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Battle?
One last thing. I'd like for everyone in the city to give its deepest condolences to the mayor and his family. They had a loss in their family, his mother-in-law, and everybody, give him his best wishes and any support they can at this time, as all of us council folk will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Battle. Thank you, sir. Mr. City Attorney?
Honorable Mayor, we checked the law, and it can be done either way. We would recommend defer at all. We'll have to re-advertise it, but if, if there's a consensus on council, a vote to do so. I don't know if we've gotten to that point, but it, both of them can be deferred, or you can have the public hearing and defer any action also, but we would recommend you defer at all. If you're going to defer anything, defer at all.
Okay. Based on a request from my colleague on council, do we have a consensus to defer this item into our next meeting? We do have the number that is acceptable for deferment until the next meeting, so we will move forward in that way, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to check the law.
Thank you, sir.
We need a motion?
Uh, 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 okay.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're in need of a motion and a second.
Mayor, I just had one question.
Okay. Vice, Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Wouldn't that include 21-16 as well?
Yes.
Yes, it's going to include both of them. Yes, sir, you're right.
Both would be deferred.
Correct, sir. So we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Motion to defer?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to defer both items? Madam Clerk, would you call the role?
Sir, just for clarification, before I call the role, we're just deferring this to the next meeting, correct?
Based on the request?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's deferral into November 23rd.
Do we have enough time to re-advertise?
That's what I was going to ask you to say.
It's not necessary to re-advertise, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much for clarification.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Moving right along, we have come to the City Manager's Report. Item 21-336, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding from the Virginia Department of Social Services in the amount of $3,300 and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 Social Services Fund for the Family Partnership Meeting Incentive Program.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Council members, is there any discussion in this matter, on this matter? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 21-337, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a bulletproof vest partnership program grant in the amount of $95,445 from the U.S. Department of Justice and appropriating said funds in the FY 2022 Grants Fund budget for the purchase of bulletproof vests.
Thank you, ma'am. And Madam Clerk, I believe we have a speaker for this item?
Yes, sir, we do.
Ms. Donna Si, ma'am? Please state your address, and you have five minutes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si. I live at 3104 Garland Drive in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in District 5, Chersland. Agenda item 21-337 reads, "The U.S. Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program is appropriating $95,445 to the city's For the Year 2022 Grants Fund Budget to Purchase Bulletproof Vests. How is the $95,445 supposed to be spent? What does the executive brief and documentation say? It says that the Portsmouth Police Department has received grant funding for $95,445 from the federal government for the purchase of bulletproof vests for the Portsmouth Police Department and Sheriff's Office personnel. In the discussion section, what does it mean to purchase the bulletproof vests with a 50-50 set aside between the police and sheriff's uniform budget lines and the grant? In the financial impact section, the dollar-for-dollar matching funds are already in the Portsmouth Police Department and Sheriff's Office General Fund Budget. Where are the matching funds already addressed? Looking at the budget page 133 for the police department and budget page 128 for the sheriff's office budget, doesn't have any matching funds addressed. More information is included in the application summary for obtaining the bulletproof vests. The sheriff's office submitted a request for 25 bulletproof vests on June 4, 2021 at the cost of $20,000. The police department submitted a request for 79 bulletproof vests on June 9, 2021 at the cost of $75,445. The total number of bulletproof vests requested is 104. Other information noted in the executive brief and documentation says that the U.S. Department of Justice wrote a letter to the Portsmouth to report the bulletproof vest partnership for the year 2021 awards is on hold. Is this true? The city is getting $95,445 from the Department of Justice, requires a dollar-for-dollar match. How is this match done? Revenues and expenses in the, for the year 2022 grants show me where the revenue and expenditures information in the, for the year 2022 Grants Fund Budget. The next information I would like to know about is that Portsmouth received $47,722.50 for bulletproof vests for the year 2021. $47,722.50 is one-half of $95,445. Does this mean anything? So you see, representatives of the people, the additional information included along with the agenda is not, not specific to inform the people so he or she can give an informed consent. My question is, how come the city doesn't plan to manage the people's tax-paying money to purchase our own bulletproof vests for our police, the police and deputies in the capital improvement plan? We, the people, need to get the federal government out of our business affairs in our city. We need to have our budget booked, the complete guide to the people's money that is planning to be spent. Our elected oath keepers need to stop America's decline and restore our biblical heritage and our constitution of we, the people.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 21-338, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an Edward Brown Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $101,201 from the U.S. Department of Justice and appropriating said funds in the FY 2022 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 21-339, and Madam Clerk, please read the item we are considering.
Yes, sir. Adoption of a motion to permit Sergeant B. Ingram to adopt Portsmouth Police Department K-9 Bear, a German Shepherd.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second. Is there any discussion from our members on council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. New business, item 21-340. Vice Mayor Barnes and Dr. Whitaker, are there any appointments to bring forward, sirs?
Not tonight.
Thank you, sir. Item 21-341, item submitted by council members. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. A resolution regarding future cooperation agreements.
Council members, we are in need of a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, excuse me. You have a question, sir?
No, no. I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
Yeah. I move that we table this matter.
Does, does it need a second? We have, we have a motion to table, and it needs a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. New business, item 21-340. Vice Mayor Barnes and Dr. Whitaker, are there any appointments to bring forward, sirs?
Not tonight.
Thank you, sir. Item 21-341, item submitted by council members. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. A resolution regarding future cooperation agreements.
Council members, we are in need of a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, excuse me. You have a question, sir?
No, no. I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
Yeah. I move that we table this matter.
Does, does it need a second? We have, we have a motion to table, and it needs a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Council members, do you have any additional items to submit, sirs? And, Madam, Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Recently shared with council members an email, and I believe Vice Mayor Barnes received a similar email, just want the city manager to bring it back, maybe add a public works or some more information on how we can look at. What our seniors are asking for is to have the fees waived for their fitness programs at the Sportsplex, I think it's $65 a year that they're asking for, and I think it's only $5,000 a year that the city generates in revenue. It's not a whole lot, so want to try to eliminate that for those seniors, so if we could have more discussion about it or more information on how those fees for those seniors can be eliminated.
Madam City Manager, did you want the floor for the, did you have a, have a response?
I was just going to say that that's part of what staff is already reviewing, recreation fees comprehensively. We were going to bring it back as a part of the budget process, but if there's a desire of the council to try to address that before the budget process, then we can add it to the list of things to be considered with the ARPA funds.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, um, City Manager, based on the research that you already presented to us, the impact of this waiver would just be $5,000 in annual revenue to the city.
And that's for, for that particular?
Right, for this one. So, um, would we need a consent, or should we amend the agenda for a new motion? How should that be handled? Because I...
I think consensus is fine. That's within the city manager's authority to do. So if that's the consensus of the council, we can definitely do that.
I would ask that the mayor take a consensus of council to waive the $65 membership fee for the senior exercise program at the Sportsplex for the upcoming year due to the extreme hardships caused by COVID.
And, and we're talking about the current year through June 30. That's what that would impact? Or you would also need to include the current, upcoming budget year as well, which would start you...
I think the upcoming budget year, that one can be handled with the new budget.
Correct.
So this is for this, this fiscal.
Gotcha.
So everyone has heard what my colleague, our colleague, has presented. Do we have a consensus to move forward? Show of hands, please. Thank you, sir. And thank you, ma'am.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Another item. Just want to make sure that we do things in the proper order. There was an email that our city clerk sent to DeAndre, to Vice Mayor Barnes, and myself at your direction for one of us to attend a meeting on Tuesday, November 16th at 2:00 to discuss youth jobs, training initiatives. And if that meeting, well, first of all, who's calling that meeting?
So, at the, at, at, at my calling, I had asked stakeholders to come to a meeting to discuss that matter, so I'm calling the meeting.
Right. Well, you know that you don't have the authority as a council member to call a meeting. That has to be at the consensus of council to do that, so, and, and also, secondly, if it's an open meeting, it can't be where just one select council member comes. And so if what you're trying to achieve is to have a meeting on youth job training and inviting persons to the meeting, particularly the city manager, then the right way to do it would, to get a consensus from council and then to publicize the meeting so that it's open to the public.
Sir, it's not a public meeting, and as the mayor, I do have some level of authority to call a meeting of citizens and stakeholders in the city of Portsmouth. It is not, it is not a meeting that's specific to inviting all of the citizens of Portsmouth, just like we have convened meetings this year on different matters of violence and other things. We have brought together stakeholder groups. The mayor has called for citizens not to be present at that meeting because we wanted to get stakeholders to discuss the issues. Those things have taken place, and that is not unusual for a mayor who is the elected leader of the city to lead in these efforts. It is not, it to the exclusion of council members. We have invited the city council liaison, one of the city council liaisons to that meeting. We have invited the school board liaison and other business leaders and stakeholders to talk about this very important issue. So you are being informed. The mayors in past have done this, and I think I'm well within my purview, sir, to call a meeting to have a discussion. I serve on boards that are regional, that are national, and I call meetings for those too. So that is where we're going to leave that matter.
Well, I don't know if what you're saying applies in a, in a council manager city. It may apply where there's some executive authority that a mayor has, but all I'm saying is to do it in proper decency and order according to our rules. I don't know, Attorney Stromberg, I, I don't know what authority is it that we as council members have to call individual meetings of constituents such as this?
Yeah, I'd have to see. I'm unaware. I'd have to see what the meeting is about, who's invited. I'd, I'd look at the, at FOIA and the open meeting laws, and that would be where I would start the research. If somebody could send me the email or whatever, I'd be happy to look into it and report quickly back within, you know, probably tomorrow.
Right. Well, the, the point is that it should, it's not a closed meeting. It's, it is an open meeting, and therefore it needs, for transparency purposes, it needs to be advertised. the charter nor the rules to call such a meeting without consent of council, and so all I'm saying is that if that's what he would like to do, he needs to get consent of council, and then we publicize it to the citizens so that it's an open meeting and it's transparent, that's, that's what I'm, and then to put the city manager in a position like this where there's not a consent of council and bringing her into a meeting, I think that's putting her in a disadvantaged position.
I'll be happy to.
Thank you, sir.
Get back with all council.
Thank you.
Very quickly.
Thank you, sir.
If the mayor would forward the.
I'll, I'll forward the meeting request to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And, and once again, let's make clear, I'm not against the meeting, I'm talking about the procedure that we're using to call the meeting.
When is the meeting scheduled?
I'll, I'll get with you, sir.
Scheduled for November the sixteenth.
I'll, I'll get with you after the meeting, sir, thank you, sir. Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, this is directed to the city manager, are we doing anything, any relief for our citizens with these water bills, um, you know, they're falling behind, it's a lot of delinquency conversation that's, you know, coming my way, and they're looking for some type of help with their water bills, um, you know, I, I guess they kind of got behind during the pandemic and, you know, our, our COVID era, so, um, is it something that we can do to help them, or is something we can do to look at these fees that they are occurring on a daily basis, monthly basis?
I can provide a more detailed response and a report back, but we have just exhausted the CARES funds, we have tried to address as many delinquencies as possible, we've also received an additional grant to the tune of over three hundred thousand dollars that, that we will need to use that. Part of what we are also looking at is how do we move from where we are to a point where we actually have to start responding to delinquencies, so that is a part of the discussion that we can, we can have, and I'll provide it more detail in the report back.
All right, thank you, because, you know, it's, people are struggling and trying to pay these bills, but, you know, these, these added fees are just starting to become, you know, I won't say ridiculous, but they are, they are doing their best to make sure they take care of their responsibilities, so I just wanted to make sure that, I did bring that to the table so we can look into it. Also, also, um, yeah, one more thing, I'm sorry, you, you know what, that's it, that's it for me, I'm sorry.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
To, to the city manager, with the upcoming signing of the infrastructure bill, have the, have there been any indication or any guidelines as far as the spending stipulation?
Not at this point, we are, we are managing that and, and making sure that we stay on top of that so that we know, one, what it's going to cover, two, how it's going to be disseminated through the states so that we can be knowledgeable and be able to offer council information as it relates to that.
Because that may change an impact on our ARPA discussion.
It could.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
Well, first I want to give a shout out to St. Mark's Deliverance Church on Turnpike, they invited me to their church on Sunday, they had a youth summit, and I was the speaker, some good, great, great speakers there with me as well, but it was good to have a chance to talk to the youth about what's going on on council and what's going on in, in the community, and they had some great questions. Also, I had a question for the city manager, I, I saw on Channel Three News regarding a, a story when something happened with somebody getting stabbed, they said that they were told by the city that we would have a crime plan in April of twenty twenty-two, is that accurate?
No, it's not, we already have a crime plan.
Okay.
Well, crime reduction plan.
When will we, when will council be presenting that?
Uh, you, it was in your packet two weeks ago.
The plan?
Yes.
Well, when will the public be presenting that plan?
We were presented it on, in different avenues, we're doing outreach to civic leagues, we're doing outreach to community groups, we're doing outreach.
But when we're going, so, I think that's, because that's something that was asked for a while ago, so when we're going to do it in a work session, will we present it? Matter of fact, can we do that in our next meeting, have a work session?
The, the next meeting is, what is the next meeting, the?
Legislative.
Twenty-third, that, um, that's going to be legislative, so it would have to be the.
In the D-Summit meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. And also, um, the, the lawyer process, we've been kicking that down the, the road for a very long time, and I know we had to announce it in a, in a council meeting, so I'm asking if we could get a consensus to start with the, the interviews so we can stop kicking that, that can down the road and actually get it handled so we can actually name a lawyer. So, so I'm guessing, Mayor, you would have to ask for the consensus.
Dr. Whitaker, do you have a question, sir?
No, that's what I was going to.
Okay, so, um, the, the request is you're asking for consensus to move forward with the interview process for our city attorney candidates?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a consensus to move the process forward for our city attorney candidates for interview? Do we need a motion in a second for that, ma'am? I don't think we do, in terms of the consensus.
No, sir, you all raised your hand, I took account.
Thank you very much. So we will begin to move that process forward.
So my, my question regarding that, what, we will get an email this week about the, the process, how would that work?
We will, you will, everyone on council will receive an email of how the process will work moving forward, we were already given that information, so now we're just going to restart that process, so everyone will be notified tomorrow about the process.
Thank you, sir.
One of the joys of being in this role is I get the opportunity to recognize citizens that have given a lot to our community, and we had one such citizen that has committed a great deal to our community, who celebrated his eightieth birthday on yesterday, November the eighth. Pastor Emeritus Joe B. Fleming, celebrated of Third Baptist Church, celebrated his eightieth birthday, and I had the privilege to represent our city and, and our community to wish Pastor Fleming well wishes. I would ask that each of you keep Pastor Fleming in your thoughts and prayers as we go forward, because he is truly a first citizen in my mind, thank you very much. Item twenty-one, oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. The King, King's parking lot on County Street, I mentioned that probably a month ago, since then, a new sign has been placed at the lot, it says unauthorized vehicles will be towed at owner's expense, it's just a single sign, doesn't inform the public where the vehicles will be towed to, or doesn't have a number to contact to find out the location of their car, but even beyond that, I don't know why a single sign is in the lot when there's also a sign saying after six, uh, citizens can park there, so it, it's definitely mixed messages, I, I think, I know business owners use, use that lot, their customers do, I think members of the church on King Street use the, use the lot, in, in addition to that sign, which I think's inappropriate, the lot itself is not kept, kept up very well, needs cleaning, but we, we need to clarify that because there are a lot of signs in the spaces saying reserved parking, I would like to know, are people paying for those reserved spots, and if so, then why is the whole lot open after six P.M.? There are a lot of questions revolving around that, a lot of, if my colleagues are agreeable, I, I would like for staff to get back with update on that parking lot and what the parameters are for the public using the lot, if there's agreement.
Madam City Manager, colleagues on council, are we in agreement on that matter? Would you please move forward with, with the request? Thank you.
Sure.
Item twenty-one dash three, four, two, report on pending items, Ms. Jones, are there any pending items, ma'am?
Yes, I have a request to the city council for approval to move forward.
To move forward using ARPA funds to pay sworn police officers retention bonuses and COVID-nineteen employee fully vaccinated incentives, we are coming close to the end of the year, I know we're going to continue to have ongoing discussions regarding the ARPA funds, but at this point, I would like to get approval to initiate these payments if it's the will of council so that we can start retaining our police officers and at least stop some of them from leaving for additional funds if at all possible.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Can we put that as an agenda item for our next meeting to vote on, this council?
Council, can we put that on the agenda for the item to vote on, on our next council meeting?
Consensus to put it on the agenda?
Yes, we need consensus for that, can we get consensus, can I see a show of hands? There you go, ma'am, if you could, Madam Clerk, if we could get that on the agenda to vote on at our next meeting. Thank you, ma'am.
And then the, the last item I have is just an information item for the city council to show staff appreciation, I am going to be offering staff the full day on the twenty-third instead of a half a day, as we go into the holiday season, this is the month of appreciation, and so our staff has continued to work with shortages and continue to show up, and so given what is happening in other jurisdictions, I thought that this was the least we could do to show appreciation to staff.
Do we have a consensus to?
I don't.
Okay, you don't need one?
I don't need it.
Okay.
It's just an information.
Just information, okay, very good, thank you, ma'am. We've now come to item twenty-one dash three, forty-three, non-agenda speakers, and before we go into our non-agenda speakers, Madam Clerk, would you read, please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir, ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require limited, up to five minutes to speak, as you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer, at the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light, four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light, at the end of five minutes, you will see a red light here beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion, a speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Our first speaker tonight is Ms. Paula Gatewood, and if you could state your name and address, ma'am, and you have five minutes.
Paula Gatewood, Portsmouth, Virginia, is that my home address also?
That's fine, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to voice, to have a voice here in this committee, I really appreciate it. I'm here today to let you know that I understand the basic needs for a closed-door, secret session of the city council dealing with city business concerning and spending of our tax dollars, I agree, in some cases, it's best, however, being, however, being you have kept particularly a high controversial case involving Senator Louise Lucas behind closed doors from citizens of Portsmouth, it's, it leads me to two questions. Has this senator's daughter, city, city council member, Ms. Louise Lucas Burke, recused herself from any and all discussions about a possible settlement involving her mother, if not, then why? The second question is, considering the political nature of the, of this particular lawsuit and the influence Senator Lucas has in this district, why would the city council even be considering and negotiations of, any negotiations of any type instead of going through a court? Furthermore, in my opinion, that, that the present issue you are considering regarding the lawsuit brought against the city by Senator Lucas has horrible political optics, and is that okay with you? Therefore, in this particular case, I believe it may be best for all concerned a court decide the outcome. Finally, I believe Senator Lucas has made her point, and I also believe any person, especially one elected to represent a city in her own district, should drop the suit and save that much-needed tax dollars, wherever the amount, whatever the amount should be, so that we might actually move forward together, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
I just want to ask the attorney a question because I know, you know, we have closed meetings, but somehow every closed meeting that we have is spread on Facebook, and some council people tell the information that's supposed to be discussed, and they lie about it, so with that being said, I want to ask the question, I don't know if I can ask this question, so you'll be able to help me, have we settled a, a case with Senator Louise Lucas?
No, we haven't.
Because that was one of the things that was put out on Facebook, that we settled a case between Senator Louise Lucas. So, and, and as far as closed meetings, can we discuss tho, those type of meetings, legal issues in public?
No, you can't.
Is that considered a secret meeting?
It's a closed session where strategy, litigation strategies discussed, and it would harm the city if it was put out in public, and that's why it's confidential, and if it's released, somebody's breaking a fiduciary duty to the city and to the rest of council, and that, that could have some ramifications, so everything in closed session is supposed to stay in closed session and not be leaked out, there's a reason for that, mainly strategy, and, and, you know, if it was public, the other side, just our adversarial system, would know everything, and, and you, you wouldn't be able to negotiate, and so, yes, it's supposed to be confidential information, that's supposed to stay in closed session and not be released to the public.
So, so in essence, that saves the city from having to overspend on certain things?
Well, I, I mean, possibly, yes.
Okay.
I, I guess, I mean, I, I don't know, you talking about the release of the information saved the city?
Yeah, I can say, if, if, so if the, if the information goes out, why would a person end up negotiating down if they already know?
Exactly, no, right, no, I understand what you're saying, absolutely, there, there's no negotiation once everybody knows the authority and the other side knows where you are.
Yeah, so, you, you know, it's, it's, it's really heartbreaking that the, that we, we look on Facebook and, and see every discussion that we have in a closed meeting, and then people on this council make the citizens believe and get them in an uproar, making them think we have in secret meetings, like we can legally have those meetings out in public for them to hear.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
I know Councilwoman Burke wanted to make a statement, but she shouldn't have to, she has publicly always recused herself, and so, and nothing has been done inappropriately.
Clarification purposes, have we settled a case with Senator Louise Lucas?
No, as I said earlier, no, we have not settled that case.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Marissa Adams. Welcome, ma'am. Please state your address and your name, and you have five minutes, ma'am.
I live on Roosevelt, between Crystal Lake Drive and Crescent, whatever that little cul-de-sac way over there is, that's where I live at.
Yes, ma'am.
In Portsmouth.
Yes, ma'am.
Eleven years. Okay, so, I've been watching city council meetings faithfully for the last three years. I used to never know what you guys were talking about half the time, but I watched as my fellow Portsmouth citizens exercised their right and ability to engage civically with elected officials. Don't blame me, blame cable channel 46 through 48. I've only been in these chambers three times so far, but each time I've watched with mixed emotions as my fellow Portsmouth citizens have spoken here about the attitude and actions of people sitting up here. Today, I'd like to speak on that, if I may. First, I have to correct myself. Last time I spoke, I said Mr. Barnes' children went to the same school as mine. I keep assuming he lives in my neighborhood, but I'm mistaken. I've come to know of you, Mr. Barnes, because before I started watching city council, I used to follow the school board faithfully. Congratulations on the trajectory of your career, it is very impressive. I'm going to name some other names I've become familiar with over the years. Bill Watson, Michael Moore, Dr. Whitaker, Kenny Wright, Curtis Edmonds, Elizabeth Seamus, James Holly, Paige Cherry, Danny Meeks, Christopher Rutter, Jimmy Williams, John Rowe, and my civic league president, Mr. Ray Smith Jr., and of course, Mrs. Lucas Burke, Mayor Glover, Bill Moody, and Mr. Battle. I've never taken any interest in local government or voting until I came to Virginia and seen elected officials that looked just like me. Elected officials as regular people is an amazing thing to see for a city girl like me. Mr. Rutter, I read a statement some time ago where I believe you said Portsmouth has an image problem. You are absolutely correct. I attended my first city council meeting in person in July, and I came because I was outraged by the water rates being raised three times in one year during a pandemic, and also because I got sick and tired of the nasty, unprofessional demeanor of people in the public utilities department. I've been a resident of Portsmouth for almost 11 years, and now outside of this sixth floor, I've always dreaded coming down to this building. I don't know if it's the result of nepotism, favoritism, or pride or entitlement, but some of the employees in this building are not very pleasant, especially and particularly in the public utilities department. I won't speak too much about my issues with public utilities with regard to my water bill today. I'll save that for the next time. But to that point, in July, when I spoke with them, the exchange with the supervisor was unpleasant, to say the least. Hold on, I lost my space. Then they sent some workers to my home who were unprofessional, in my opinion. Driving and parking on the opposite side of the road, facing oncoming traffic while blasting rap music are the actions I'm referring to as unprofessional. More recently, this past week, arriving to my home in a show of force that included six older male city employees at 8:00 a.m. as I was leaving out my driveway to go to my internship. Lost my space again, hold on. Um, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm from the hood of southeast San Diego. We don't pull up in multiple vehicles with multiple people unless it's a problem. Allow me to explain that in a less urban way. How many people does it take to change a light bulb? No light bulbs were involved, but hopefully you understand that analogy. How many people did it take to come and check for a leak? I don't think six people were necessary. I've encountered people driving city vehicles that aren't so pleasant. I've encountered public officials in public who aren't so pleasant, and the list goes on and on. And while one doesn't always relate to the other with regard to my encounters with city employees, it made me begin to reflect on things that I've observed even within these city council chambers. This past spring, I had to stop watching the virtual city council meetings for a little while because, woo, Mr. Barnes, your body language and facial expressions spoke more than you ever could. I saw that again at the last public work session, that's the only reason why I mentioned it today. And Mr. Battle, I encountered you in passing in public last year or the year before. It wasn't really a pleasant experience. So unpleasant that I said, I ain't gonna vote for that guy. And Moody, I haven't heard much from you, but I've read plenty on Twitter. And although it was quite amusing, last city council meeting, some of the comments y'all had towards each other were quite condescending and sarcastic. And I just watched Battle and the mayor argue in the last public work session, and then I watched something happen today between Dr. Whitaker and Mr. Glover. I was watching it out in my car. I'ma hurry up, I got 26 seconds. You know, studies show that a person is 10 times more likely to tell others about a negative experience than a positive experience. So is there really a question of why Portsmouth has an image problem? It starts at the top with y'all. The city of Portsmouth is extremely divided right now. It's divided politically, racially, and economically. There are prominent people in the city that don't mind voting for you, but still have no faith or trust in you all. There, 30 more seconds?
Finish your thought, ma'am.
There is a public disdain, there is a public disdain for city council right now. While I have respect and admiration for the positions you hold, I'm inclined to agree with the people who have spoken to this point. There's some attitudes and actions that need to be cleaned up considering the positions of influence you hold and the level of service to the city your job entails. I'm no politician, but I know that a house divided against itself cannot stand. It starts here. For me personally, I live a life of service to others, and so I often say two things. If not me, then who? And two, I'm paid to be pleasant. I believe the latter is true for each of you. Y'all are paid to be pleasant, even when you don't like what we have to say, and especially in times of discourse or disagreement, in an election year or out of election year. Public service requires you to be pleasant. We see the position our state just took in this recent election. The city of Portsmouth needs to tighten up because y'all are all we got right now. I have more, but I'll stop right there.
Ms. Adams, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Adams.
May I?
Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
One time I went to school about one of my kids, and you kind of sounded like the teacher there. She was telling me, well, she did this, she did that. It wasn't this, it was bad, I don't like this. She didn't speak this morning. And I said to the instructor, is there anything good you have to say about her? So, let me say to you, not knowing me and prejudging me on one occasion, have you seen any good in me since?
You know, I don't know you personally, so that's the thing that's unfortunate about the situation is,
So you took?
That one encounter. But I've been in city council chambers, so I haven't developed an opinion either way.
I understand, but you watch the city councils, right?
I sure do.
Have you seen anything good in me since you've been watching them, since you're an advocate watcher of the councils?
You dress real well.
That's a good start, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Ms. Katrina Smith. Good evening, Ms. Smith. You have five minutes, ma'am.
I'm Katrina Smith, I'm president of Portsmouth. Today, I came with more questions and suggestions today. The topic I want?
Speak into the mic, ma'am, so we can hear you. Yes, ma'am.
I came today with more questions today and suggestions today. My topic is on the summer job program for the youth. I think last city council meeting, if, correct me if I'm mistaken, you spoke on summer jobs at, starting at Barnsacure, if I'm not mistaken, that you have coming up this summer? Am I mistaken?
Well, we, we had a presentation earlier about include that and summer jobs for rec and all of that good stuff, too. We had that.
You did speak on that earlier, before I got here. So, are we going to have a summer job program this summer for the youth coming up?
Madam Manager, would you address that, please?
Yes, we, we have a summer jobs program for youth, starting at the age 16.
Starting at age 16, okay. And it will be like, you know, put out for the public, for the community?
It's already out, we put it on the city's website, and we talked about earlier of how to get information out in different mediums.
Okay.
So, yes, we, it's already on the city's website. It's $14 an hour, the lowest age is 16.
Okay, and I also had some other suggestions, too, for the youth. You know, like, all, all youth aren't, you know, college male, let's be realistic. They aren't, everybody, you know, isn't college male. They also aren't good in sports, everybody doesn't want to go to sports. So, a suggestion I have, like the apprenticeship program. Could we think about starting it for children that are like 16 or 17? You know, my son is graduating, he's an early grad, he's going to graduate in January. He's 17, so maybe we could start an apprenticeship program for children when they get out of school, when they graduate in January, have something set up to where a skill set that, that can help them get lucrative careers, like occupational health. You know, something where it's not just fast food or things like that. In the medical field, education, things like that, something that will help them get lucrative careers while they're in high school versus before they're grown, to help them when they're grown, when they graduate, just in case they don't go to college. Some children learn hands-on, you know, everybody is not ready to go to college. Some children don't, you know, that's not what they're ready for. So that's just a suggestion I have, to start the apprenticeship program when they're in high school. To give them something to look forward to when they, you know, so that they won't go down the road of crime. Some children are just bored, they don't have anything to do. So if we give them something to look forward to when they get out of school, you know, when they go home, hey, I have the apprenticeship program to go to, I have this to do. They have something to look forward to positive, they don't think about crime, they won't think about negative. You know, when I was growing up, my grandma taught us an idol, an idle man is a devil's workshop. Give them something positive to look forward to, so they won't think about crime. That's all.
Thank you, Katrina. Our next speaker, Ms. Keisha Martin. Ms. Martin? Is Keisha with us? Our next speaker is Mr. Steve Carroll. Mr. Carroll, sir? State your name and address, and sir, you have five minutes.
Steve Carroll, 3112 River East Drive. I'm not sure if I'm here to head off a mistake or mourn for one already made. That's in relation to this article that came out November 6th about a settlement that was given to 10 of the people who vandalized the War Memorial last year, to the tune of $15,000. Many of y'all have seen the videos and the audios and the personal testimony of those present. I mentioned earlier, some of those vandals were armed. That's a serious felony. Did you know that there was a minor present and participated in the vandalism? That's contributing to the delinquency of a minor. And yet, you gave 10 of those people a settlement. There is not an honest jury in this country that saw those videos or heard the testimony and the audios would have given them one cent, and yet you caved and gave them money upfront. I looked at the responsibilities of the city attorney the other night to take care of the fiscal and legal best interest of the city. Councilperson Burke has repeatedly contended that the War Memorial was city property. If it was city property, why didn't the city attorney file charges against the vandals? I'd like an answer to that question. How much money was the taxpayer shaking down for the attorney fees? Did the settlement include non-disclosure agreements that would shield the cohorts, the other vandals, or the people who formed the conspiracy to vandalize the War Memorial? The public deserves answers. Election day, I was approached by a voter. Did you hear that 10 people got awarded, and it was an exceptionally higher amount than $15,000? And my response, no, I have not heard anything to that effect, and I won't pursue it unless you can give me further proof. Thursday, Wednesday, I heard the same rumor. Thursday, I heard the same rumor. Friday, I heard the same rumor again, and then Saturday, the news report. Here's what I think. I don't think it was leaked by someone involved in skullduggery. My gut feeling is, it was leaked by someone to make the public think they only got $15,000 out of this deal, and it was damage control, that's what I think. If further settlements are being considered or being engaged in, I suggest you stop them now. There is no negotiation for negotiating with thugs who violently destroy property, public or private. To do show is like giving up your money to the schoolhouse bully. I'd rather get a bloody nose than to give up. Quoting from this news report, "is a terrible injustice that was done to these activists trying to exercise their First Amendment rights, and they were due something," said Councilman Mark Whitaker, end quote. That's really rich. Coming from an ex-felon preaching to us about constitutional law and constitutional edicts, and us being told by thugs and vandals, we can get away with it. Did you know I sat in the courtroom that morning when Lucas and her bunch ran off? They laughed, members of council, they laughed. They turned around and left the courthouse laughing, and you settled with them. That's a disgrace, and I'm disgusted. I am disgusted, I've lived here 65 years, and every day, to the young lady's point, I get more disgusted. More disgusted. Wow. They laughed at us, they laughed at the taxpayers, they laughed at law-abiding citizens as they walked out of the courtroom with your thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Mr. Sergio Neal. Is Mr. Neal in the audience? Please state your address, sir, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Sergio Neal. I live at 1420 M. Avenue Apartment C in the city of Portsmouth. If y'all want to come visit my neighborhood, feel free, just let me know, we'll schedule a tour. Anyway, I'm here to talk about tonight, some accountability in this city. The young lady that came and spoke about the conditions of some of the services she's received from the city, I feel her pain because I had to go through it with waste management over a trash can. I had, my trash can was stolen, I didn't know I had to go through the whole, call the police and file a report to get a new trash can. When they ride around my neighborhood with trash cans in the back of their truck all day long, that was a complete waste of officer time. You know, that, that we gotta do, gotta do something better. Moving forward, we hear a lot of talk about, oh yeah, you know, we represent the citizens, we, you know, we trying our hardest, you know, the plans that come about, like Mr. Barnes spoke about. I, I really want to see this crime plan into fruition. I really want to see it actually work. Because I know full well, a lot of our neighbors, a lot of the people that live around here, we're getting tired of the same old, same old, everything. The same old, oh, here we go with another shooting. A young lady was just killed down the street from my house tonight, before I even got to the council meeting at 5:36 on Pearl Street. We, we gotta, we gotta stop, you know, sometimes in life, we gotta stop kicking the can down the curb because the problem just gets worse and worse. We gotta do something like right now. And I've said this at the last council meeting that I attended, because, and then it started with a whole stream of people coming up and saying, you know, yes, we are frustrated. And I'm saying it again because I would like to see more citizens come before council and let you all know exactly what's going on. Because, see, the news is going to tell one thing. They, they're going to go to the people that they feel like should know. But like I discussed with a reporter the, not too long ago, that reported on the school board matter, you all talk to the regular citizens and get our point of view. Come and see it for what it really is, because, see, we don't have any agendas. We're not protecting an election. We're not pandering to whatever side of the political aisle you want to be on. Because I tell people all the time, I don't have an aisle. I have an issue, every issue, that, that's my point of the right and wrong. I could care less about a Republican, a Democrat. I could care less about a Republican, a Democrat, whatever the case might be, because at the end of the day, when you are walking through your neighborhood, and you seeing the same old, same old stuff, but you have people telling you, we have a plan, we, we wanna know, we wanna know when the plan is to become action, because we, we've been planning for a long time. And, and right, wrong, or indifferent, you know, money is being spent in this city, we get it, but we need to make sure it's being spent in the right manner, you know, because we, we are tired of seeing a lawsuit about this, a lawsuit about that, a lawsuit about this, a lawsuit about that. That money that's spent on lawsuits could be put into something, a program in the city that's really making a difference. It could be put into retaining city employees, so we don't get crappy city service. Because I can tell you right now, some people are comfortable in their position because they feel like they are needed, and they gonna stay, and they not gonna get terminated. We gotta change that narrative, we gotta get some, let's give the people what they're paying for, or otherwise, somebody got to go, because it's getting old, it's really getting old. So what, my, my endpoint is simply this, when we'll have, like, and then the young lady that spoke about the perception she gets of council, guess what, that's the reality. I spoke about that a while ago, of how some of our citizens view council, and some people took it for a joke, and, and it's a, it's the real deal, because people are watching, they might not come down here and speak, but they are paying attention, and they want to know exactly what's going on. And they're getting tired of, oh my God, you from Portsmouth, the scared look on people's face, because they see the performance that's put on by some of our council. And right, wrong, or indifferent, for y'all to have the spirited discussions, you know, I, I get it, because I know how I am, I'm very passionate about my points. I appreciate Mr. Barnes and Mr. Whitaker, Mr. Battle, Mr. Whitaker, for, for bringing, that's how it is. Sometimes as a leader, Mr. Glover, you gotta take the heat, is what it is, that they only doing what their job is. I know you might not like it sometimes, but guess what, that's how it is, because when I'm in the meeting with my staff, I get the same stuff, and I have to do it for, for the same thing. So y'all have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Shaniqua High? Please state your address, ma'am, and you have five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am a resident of Dale Home. My name is Shaniqua High, as you stated. I am here to speak about the crime in our city, not just my neighborhood. Even though I get to see it firsthand, right in action, I've had to dodge bullets, strawberries on my knees, I got a two-year-old little boy who got strawberries on his forehead, we really get it out there. I don't see the change. I've been a part of Portsmouth all my life. I lived in the Southside Gardens for about fifteen years of my life. After Southside Gardens, I moved to Marsh Landing, after Marsh Landing, I ended up in Dale's Home ever since I was nineteen. I've never seen it this bad. I don't know what it's gonna take, but I've been here, and I've been a part of this for a while now. In two thousand and sixteen, I lost my brother on Moss and Carver Street to senseless violence, and I've been a part of my nonprofit, well, I started a nonprofit organization ever since then. In about two thousand and seventeen, I started doing things in the community, going to pick kids up, from neighborhood to neighborhood, activities here and there, doing whatever I could to keep them off the street after how I lost my brother, how I had to see my brother land there. I have pictures of how it really get down in Dale's Home, what I really have to go through. I just wanna say that from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-one, I have seen a change drastically in our community with how the violence have become. And I know that from the research that I do and the knowledge that I try to give myself, I know that Portsmouth is now in the top ten for dangerous, a dangerous city in the United States. We have become now one hundred and thirty-five percent higher than the national's average. Portsmouth has become three and sixteen, I mean, a three and sixteen chance of becoming a victim of any crime. Since two thousand and sixteen, I have been able to change the lives of a lot of teenagers, not that, not knowingly, not, not with any credit from anyone. I really get out in my community and get those kids off the streets, have talks with them, I really, I seen where you guys, where they was granted in PRHA, two hundred and forty-nine, I think, thousand for security. I watched security watch the, a shooter drive by, shoot about three, three houses got shot up in the community that day. One of my, my houses was one of, we really get it really bad out there, and I don't see where the change is, what's going on, like Mr. Barnes stated, what's the plan? I watched the city council meetings, I worked with a lot of community outreach programs, I haven't seen where, I haven't read where, I haven't seen any change where, and nothing's happening, not as fast as it should happen for us, not as should hap, not as fast as it should happen for the kids. I stand before y'all as a concerned mother, citizen, and a resident of Dale's Home. Our, our community is scared, our residents are scared, we can't come outside our doors. It's not getting better for us, we are afraid to take our groceries in the house. I live around nothing but old people, I assist them in every way because of the violence and the scare I get from them in the neighborhood and how things are happening. If something don't happen fast, we in trouble as a city. As y'all standing, sitting before us, we in trouble if something don't happen right away. And that's the only reason why I'm here today.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
Two questions to our, our city manager. As far as the, the plan, I know we were saying that we were going to meet with certain groups, are we including those groups as the, the people in the neighborhood, like this young lady right here, Ms. High?
Yes.
So, because I would like to see us go out Dale Homes and talk to them, and Swanson Homes, and London Oaks, and all that, and, and, because I, I did hear from a civic lead president that on the seventeenth, there was supposed to be some presentation to them, but I think one of the, the things that we need to go to first is where the crime is happening most, and, and talk to, and present it to them, especially for that, and, and, and the other thing is, is when are, when are we going to implement the plan? Is there immediate, is there immediate plan to do it ASAP, like today, tonight? Because somebody did get shot, I, I got that email, somebody in this room sent me the article as well, so is that, is that a...
Please, please keep in mind that we're looking at it from a holistic point of view. The city is not the only player in this, we're partnering with ambassadors that are in each of those areas that you spoke of, Dale's Home, London Oaks, all of that, and they're communicating efforts and actions and, and working with the community to bring back solutions. So it's not just the city...
Did we partner with her?
We, I was, I wanted to, I wasn't gonna interrupt, I wanted to know, who is it that we're partnering with, who is, that you guys partner with from PRHA? I've spoken with...
Oh, not PRHA.
The entire board.
Oh, I thought you was speaking... But we have Eugene Swinson, it has programs in Dale's Home that he is connecting with community members for, we have Back to the Block ambassadors that are out there that are talking to citizens, so we, we can do more, and we are, but I just wanna point out, it's not just the city that's getting information, we're trying to get information on what we can do, solutions. I'm meeting with individual citizens on a daily basis to try to identify solutions that we can do, actions that we can put into place, so if you have actions, if you have recommendations, please, by all means, tell us what they are, and we'll work with you to implement.
Will we be a part of them?
Yes, absolutely.
So, so, because I feel like Ms. High, and I know about her nickname, but she's somebody, so some of them people you name, get information from her. So I felt like she should have, it's, it's somebody like Ms. High in every neighborhood, so people like her should have been at the table a long time ago.
I don't know her.
Because we, we can't, but that's what we were saying earlier about talking to the citizens. Organizations putting them out there is not getting that, they're getting their firsthand knowledge from people like Ms. High. And, and that, that, that should be part of the, the plan, and we've been talking about that over and over again, like, not talking to organizations that, that's, that's working on programs in the community, we talking to people like Ms. High, which I know her ass juicy. But these are, it's, it's people like her in the community, in all communities, that can, can tell you, she, I actually got that phone call when she was talking about the security, and, and, but people like Eugene Swinson, he works with her. So she need, people like her need to come to the table. I think we're, we're missing a lot if we, if we haven't already, if we have a plan and haven't talked to people like her, I can't see how we're gonna be successful.
Well, the plan is not a stagnant item, it is a living document, it's a living thing that we make adjustments as we see fit. So now that, that I have a contact, I can reach out to her, just like I've reached out to other people.
But I think my frustration comes because we, we said this a long time ago.
But I do not know the people.
It's not like, I'm talking right now.
Excuse me?
We, we, we said this, that, a long time ago, that we need to include those people, and, and that, that comes with actually going out to community and actually having, maybe having a town hall meeting and letting them come, so you can find out who those people is. It, it just seems like we're dealing with the middleman when it comes to this.
You can sit down now, ma'am, you can sit down, thank you. Thank you very much, and, and as the manager had indicated, if you would please get with, 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 with the proper individuals after this meeting, so we can collect some information, and we certainly would like for all who want to be a part of the solution to participate, and thank you for sharing your story, and thank you for doing all the things that you do, and on behalf of this city council, we don't want any mother, any, any of our citizens, nor their children crawling on the floor because they're afraid, that's not acceptable, and I want to convey that to you with the most sincerity that I can give you. So that's what I recommend, thank you. That concludes our speakers for the evening. If there's not any other business to conduct, this meeting is adjourned.